So it's a documentary about the election. It started back in 19, I think they were on stage and they kind of all. So we went to the Ted Cruz rally town. So the guy that hosts Circus. It's that guy. So he was there, so we recognized. He goes, oh, hey. He goes, I didn't know I had.
Okay, we will call to order the special meeting for the Shenandoah City Council Monday, October 8th, 28 at 7:00 PM. Appreciate everybody showing up for a Monday meeting as opposed to Wednesday. We had to change the schedule around a little bit for the TML conference. Call the roll notice everybody's here. We're gonna stand and say the pledge of allegiance and then if you'd like to stay standing with me, we'll say a quick invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, I want to come before you tonight and say thank you. Thank you for your love and your grace. Thank you as we say that pledge of allegiance that it reminds us that we are one nation, we are one people, bound together for a common interest to try to do nothing more than make our lives the best that we can and honor you in the things that we do. We're not always gonna get it right. We're gonna make mistakes, but we as a community just try to work together. Try to work together to come up with the best solutions, the best possible outcomes that help all of us have a better quality of life. Help us remember that. Help us treat each other with the love and the grace as neighbors that you show us each and every day. Pray these things in your son's name and all God's people's said. Okay, well, we will start off with item five, which is citizens forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government. When I call your name, approach the podium and if you don't mind, please state your name into the microphone. For the record, we do have some YouTube viewers and we do like to keep a record of the meetings. Keep in mind, we can't deliberate with you, so you won't get any back and forth comments from us, but we do hear you and we appreciate your input and your comments. So with that, our first guest is Zoltan. I can't read the last name, it looks like maybe Carl. Zoltan Carl.
Okay, so my name is Zoltan Carl. And first of all, thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say state, if you don't mind for the, state your address for the record, please.
Sure. 18 Karen Oaks Place, 773-81 in the Prozwood subdivision. Okay, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I believe I was here in May on the same agenda topic, the proposed intersection improvement at Research Forest and Grogans Mill Road. Once again, I implore the council to reconsider the underpass option and look at an ad grade widening for that intersection as part of a holistic approach to LOS improvement in the area. So the mobility plan outlined it as well as other options and the study by BGE, there seems to be several discrepancies in terms of costs, in terms of how many lanes, in terms of relevance and importance with improving LOS of that intersection compared to Lake Woodlands and similar. The Lake Woodlands intersection at Grogans Mill Road is projected to have a 241% increase in traffic by 2040, whereas the intersection of Research Forest and Grogans Mill Road is anticipated to have less than 100%. So 88% versus 241%, it seems like the priority would be the Lake Woodlands and Grogans Mill Road intersection versus the Research Forest. I know safety is a concern at that intersection. Several accidents happen there, collisions on a daily basis, and ad grade widening would help with dedicated turning lanes to help meet the safety issues we're concerned about at that intersection in particular. The community as a whole is not in favor of the underpass or an overpass option. There is an online petition, 165 signatures currently. With more time, I'm sure we can get more, but both Woodlands and Shenandoah residents are very strongly opposed to either one of those options and the ad grade widening seems like the way to spend the tax dollars available to make improvements to LOS. Going down the corridor of Research Forest Drive, there is no other intersection with an overpass and underpass. SPUIs, dedicated turn lanes, ad grade widening seem to be the way to, that has improved Kirkendall as well as Gosling Road. Communication with the residents, we feel, has been very, very weak, so we'd like to see a little bit more of that, not necessarily see at the table, but to have our voices heard in addition to venues such as this, but be part of that process. Flooding, noise, environmental studies, none of those are clear by BGE. Have they been performed? What those look like? Where we're going to put hydraulic studies and pumps and generators for those pumps to prevent the flooding that is imminent with such a solution? The Lake Woodlands intersection was a committed project in the mobility plan, so residents are curious to see why that is suddenly off the table and the analysis by BGE doesn't seem to have that as an alternative at all. Above all, I think the holistic approach to look at not just pushing traffic to the next light, but dealing with the real problem at I-45 and Research would be the way to consider.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is David Kefer.
My name is David Kefer. I'm a resident at 66 North Overland Place in Tiffany Green. Several years ago, I've cleared before the gentlemen and ladies to voice opposition to the improvements at that time that were projected for the intersection, Grogans Mill and Research Forest. At that time, we had garnered about 135, 140 signatures on a petition and it was pretty much equally split between Shenandoah residents as well as Woodlands residents. Today, we're revisiting that. We have, as Zoltan commented, an online petition with over 160 signatures already. Again, many of them from Shenandoah residents that are voicing opposition to his planned development. As Zoltan commented, it seems to be a misguided application of a solution to where the solution needs to be. We all know that there's a bottleneck at I-45. We know too, from the projections that have been given, that the traffic increase will be dramatically more, 25% more at Lake Woodlands and Grogans Mill than it is projected to be at Grogans Mill and Research Forest. So why, why this? What benefit is this development to the Shenandoah residents? You're gonna eliminate an intersection, people will speed up and you'll have a backup of cars at Six Pines. So I just fail to see why this project has been revisited again with this amount of, let's say, elevation and priority when that's not the right place to put it according to the traffic projections. So again, I would ask reconsideration for supporting of this development. There are other grade options that are available to alleviate and direct the flow of traffic in a better way. So you won't have one car pushing another one into the signposts, but this is not the best expenditure of $24 million. So you save a few seconds and eliminate traffic light and all the traffic gets backed up right here at Six Pines. So again, thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Okay, and last person that's signed up to speak is Larry Tepper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm shocked to get my name right. Thank you so much, because it's not spelled like that at all. I was here probably two or three years ago when this first came up. I'm a resident of the Woodlands. My name is Larry Tepper. I live at 2 Overland Place. I'm in the first house directly behind the new bank that was built at that intersection. I've lived there for about 10 years and I've enjoyed living there quite a bit. Last time this went around, David, prior speaker and myself, went to the citizens in the local area on a weekend, on a Saturday. We caught as many as we could and the people that were interested signed up our petitions and we took that to HGAC as well as the Woodlands Township and there was, and to City Council here in Shenandoah. Y'all were nice enough to say, yeah, you know, you got a point here. This could be a problem with an overpass and so we were able to get HGAC to agree with that because of your help and kind of put the goodbyes on that. But it didn't go away. It's back. They wanted to do it again. I'm not quite sure the reasoning behind it, as I know there are approximately 28 controlled intersections going down Research Forest from I-45 all the way to the end of Research Forest, approximately 28. When I say controlled, I mean either stoplight or a stop sign. Some of them are very busy, Kirkendall Road, Gosling Road. Interestingly enough, though, there's, there's nothing on the books about improving those two intersections. Why this particular intersection makes no sense to me as much as I'm trying to understand it. There's a stoplight at both ends, which is just gonna continue to keep traffic back done. So one of the problems seems to be there's four different intersections, a lack of visibility. I can understand changing the intersection, not necessarily with an overpass or an underpass, when the overpass wouldn't be agreed upon by yourselves, which I really appreciate and I hope you stick to that. The alternate plan, Plan B, became the underpass. Problem with the underpass is there's been a clear understanding that it'll flood at least twice a year. It seems kind of silly to spend $24 million when there's going to be a shutdown of that major artery at least twice a year as a minimum. So I would ask that you not only consider that you not back the overpass, but also reconsider backing the underpass as that's gonna have effect on a lot of, I believe, the property values. All the people I've spoken to are very much concerned up and down Grogans Mill Road, much more so than last time. It's a much larger ground swell. That's Shenandoah residents as well as Woodlands residents. My time's running out, so I won't talk about the timing. The saving of time is almost ludicrous when we talk about how much is gonna be spent and how much time's gonna be saved. It's minuscule seconds. It's about a minute that'd be saved, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, appreciate everybody coming to speak tonight. From there, we will move into council inquiry and again, if you have, if you have something specific that you need to state, now would be a decent time to do so while we, while we have a good crowd. If anybody's got anything.
Yeah, I'm just gonna throw this out here now rather than waiting. We got one more day to register to vote tomorrow. If you haven't done that, please go do that. There's a lot of important decisions coming up.
Thank you, Councilman McLeod. Good, good point. Okay, with that.
I have one, Rich.
Yes, go ahead.
The twisted oak and the emergency entrance stop sign, could we do a traffic study on that for speed and car counts?
Yes, we can, we can definitely look at that. I guess some pricing.
Very good. All right, we'll move in, obviously we'll have another council inquiry, so feel free to bring anything up you need to then, it's just sometimes we lose our crowd, so. Item seven is update and discuss regarding, discussion regarding mobility project coordination. This is an update and discussion item only. Who's got this one? You do?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry, I wasn't sure if Joseph was gonna start off or not. I gave a presentation to the MDD board a couple of weeks ago, so I just wanted to give an update to y'all as well. We have been working very hard with the city staff to coordinate the David Memorial, the Tamina Road projects, the I-45 at Tamina Road improvements. And just a quick update, we have now met with all of the different potential partners or people who are very interested or adjacent to the projects that I was discussing. The last two that we met was the adjacent property owner on David Memorial. He's between the hospital and the Sam Moon. That was our last one at that location. We also met with Conroe ISD. We actually had two meetings with them. We met with some staff to discuss the David Memorial extension and how that would affect the school and bus routes. And then John Blal and Kathy met with Melanie Bush and it sounds like they're gonna be very supportive of well, of that. Any questions about our transportation?
Does supportive mean dollars?
Yes, sir, it could. It sounds like Melanie is gonna bring that forward because they see the impact that it will definitely have on their schools and on their bus routes. So the next time they go to a bond, it sounds like she's really gonna push to try and have that on there.
Good. Thank you.
I don't know how much. Anything else?
Every little bit counts. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Derek. Appreciate the work y'all are doing on that. Okay, let's move to item eight, discussion and possible action to adopt the following resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah approving revisions to the City of Shenandoah's thoroughfare plan.
Council, this has come full circle from the Town Hall through planning and zoning and it's now ready for adoption. If that's the direction council chooses to go, P&amp;Z had no concerns or recommendations for changes. They just had a few questions, which were addressed in their last meeting.
Just for the record, Kathy, do you want to highlight any of the changes?
Sure, you'll see them on, first of all, the thoroughfare plan is attached as an exhibit and the resolution spells out the changes are to include the roadways within the Metro Park Square development. Those were added, excuse me, the reclassification and downgrade of David Vetter Boulevard and Grogans Mill Road. They're downgraded to collector streets. Six Pines and Pinecroft Drive were reclassified, reclassified and upgraded to minor arterials. And lastly, the alignment of Lark Lane and the connection to Vision Park was revised to remove that connection. Those are the only changes.
Kathy, I believe there was an overpass at Vision Park and Shenandoah Park that was also removed.
That was removed, yes, you're correct. And Grogans Mill was modified. The reclassification changed it from a four lane to a two lane.
So previously, the thoroughfare plan showed Grogans Mill as being four lanes?
Correct.
And this change would make Grogans Mill two lanes?
That's correct. It downgraded the roadway classification.
And the change would also eliminate, from the city's perspective, the overpass at I-45 that would connect Shenandoah Park to Vision Park to Grogans Mill?
That's correct. Yeah, apologies for leaving that one off.
So I'll move to approve with the stipulation that we add, we list the removal of the overpass in the resolution.
Second. So I have approval, I have a motion by Councilman Beavers. I have a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any discussion?
So the only other, so the Six Pines and Pinecroft were collectors before?
No, they were.
What were they classified as?
They were minor arterials, is that right? They were.
That's what they are now.
They were collectors.
They were collectors.
And upgraded to minor arterials.
To reflect the fact that they're multiple lanes as opposed to what, when they were initially, they were only the, yeah. Just, we basically named them what they are.
Right.
Right.
So I'll, I'll just state again for, if it wasn't clear enough, that once again, this is just one step that this council is, is trying to take to protect the residents by eliminating that overpass at I-45 and Vision Park, which would then feed traffic off of I-45 down a four lane Vision Park road, through a traffic circle that would no longer be there based on an easement agreement with the county, onto a four lane Grogans Mill Road and down into the Woodlands. And you can imagine what that would do to our businesses on Research Forest and you can imagine what it would do to our residents that live along Grogans Mill. There's a lot of misinformation out there. I encourage a lot of people to go back to the last council meeting YouTube video and watch that video, at least the first hour and a half of it, through four presentations where, where several different people talked about some of the history and some of the steps. So I, I like this step a lot and I appreciate Councilman Beavers and Councilman McLeod for making that motion. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'll add, expand that a little bit, Mayor, for the sake of our guests who came and spoke before tonight, but the South County Mobility Plan does have Grogans Mill being four lanes north of Research Forest, connecting over the, over I-45 to Shenandoah Park and it's my belief, the Mobility Plan also shows it extending east and it's my belief that eventually, if that were to happen, that road would connect to the eventual extension of Hardy Toll Road. I think that would be detrimental to Shenandoah and to our neighbors that live along Grogans Mill as well. So part of the process of approving a resolution of support is a negotiation to get some of those things removed. We have all stood adamant that we don't want Grogans Mill to ever be four lanes. We are taking active measures to keep that from happening. I believe, and I believe all of us agree, that an ad grade intersection would be the best thing to do at this time. It's not in the cards and through the negotiation, that's what we came to the conclusion of. It's also not our money, so it's, we're in a difficult spot, but the priority for me is to protect Grogans Mill being two lanes, to keep that connection from happening across to the east side of I-45. So that's some of the reason. I'd be happy to talk with y'all in more detail about it later. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Any more discussion? All excellent points. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Okay, item nine, discussion and possible action to approve a proposal from Blal Engineering regarding the HGAC funding application.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brat, I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
I think it makes sense to request MDD reimburse the city for this, but I'm in favor of it either way.
I think that's a great idea. I think, I would assume that we would probably need to put that on an agenda and vote on it on MDD.
Correct.
If we want to pay the city, so if you wouldn't mind putting that on the next MDD agenda, that'd be awesome. And just to be clear, this is, this is asking HGAC to help with the David Memorial extension, which is not any other projects for this particular request. Any, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five oh. Item 10, discussion and possible action to approve an interlocal agreement with Montgomery County regarding the extension of David Memorial Drive.
Council, you have a redlined version of the agreement that we received this morning. It shows some modifications that were made between the city attorney and the county's attorney on Friday. Bill can answer any questions that you may have. This agreement spells out the, the bond funds of $2 million that the county has committed to the David Memorial extension.
Is there a, is there any more context to what the agreement?
The, the context is that at the moment, the county does not want to commit more than bond designated money. We, on the other hand, said your $2 million would only build an asphalt two lane road, so we think in the future, we may want more money. The county is willing in the future to consider that, just depending on the circumstances. That's why you have the addition to Section 6. The county's concern then is at the very end of Section 6, they don't want to commit any funds unless they know that we're going to connect all the way to 242. And so that's why you'll see the very last sentence of Section 6, they set forth that, that they're reserving their commitment until it'll go all the way to 242. And that's basically the two changes. We want it to, the right to go back and get more money and they don't want to commit money until it's, they're certain it'll go to 242.
So we still gotta get money from other entities and get direct commitments from those entities? And I mean that.
Well, I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities.
But if we know, this is the, this is the part that's in this, it's in between Conroe and Shenandoah.
Correct. It goes from north of the Shenandoah city limits, but just short of 242. And that's where we need help, either from City of Conroe or Methodist Hospital to make that final connection.
But again, this last sentence is, they're not doing anything until that shows up.
Correct.
Until everybody agrees that we can put all the pieces of the puzzle together and nobody wants to contribute, just their piece of the puzzle.
No one wants to.
And I get that.
No one wants to build a road that ends 600 feet short of 242.
Right. Including the City of Shenandoah.
Yeah, including the City of Shenandoah.
Okay, so do you have a motion?
I have a motion. We approve the interlocal agreement with Montgomery County.
I have a motion by Councilman Brat. Second, I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. I think these are good changes. I'm okay with them. I would, I would have the same questions if I were the county and, and I would like to go back to them for some more money because I am in no way, shape or form interested in building a two lane asphalt road just outside of our city limits. When we do this, we need to do it right, so there's not a bottleneck that occurs right there and it's actually a usable road. So thank you for the work on that.
I agree with the concept. The changes seem reasonable. I'm struggling with the timing. Is there a pressing need to do it now?
Yes.
The county is, is going to, at its next meeting, consider this interlocal agreement.
And we'd like to have it as part of our submission to HGAC.
Correct.
That, that was the missing piece.
That's the key.
So on the termination clause, do we think this is going to start actually working in 24 months?
No.
So we're gonna have to do it all over again?
Well, yes. I mean, I think that that's realistic, but.
I didn't, I didn't think it was realistic.
But there, understanding certain county commissioners don't want to commit well, long into the future when they know they're not gonna be there.
Sure. I think we can get a long way down the road in 24 months, though.
Right.
No pun intended. Any more discussion?
Yeah, has Commissioner-elect Metz been in the loop on this at all?
My communication, yeah, my communications have been with BD Griffin, so I don't really.
Yeah, my communications with Commissioner Clark was that he has been discussing all of his current projects with Mr. Metz and that apparently they're on the same page. But that's strictly communication with Commissioner Clark. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four one with Councilman Beavers being the one nay. Okay, item 11, discussion and possible action to schedule council meeting dates for November and December.
Council, this is our annual process of selecting the single meeting dates for November and December due to the holidays. Historically, we have tried to go with the first regular meeting of the month. Every now and then we deviate from that because of conflicts. We, staff is asking if we could consider, if council could consider the November 14th as the meeting day, which is the regular meeting day because of public notices that the city has paid for.
I move that we set the dates on November 14th, 2018, and December 12th, 2018.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilman Beavers. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? Anybody have any, everybody got their calendars out and looking? Nobody's got a scheduling conflict?
Both of those dates are regular.
Yeah, I thought you'd say, I mean, should be, should be kind of a no brainer, but just double checking. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 12, discussion and possible action to adopt the following resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, adopting the Montgomery County Hazard Mitigation Plan and appointing the positions of designee and reviewer.
Counsel, this was tabled at the last meeting, and at the request of Councilman Beavers, it's brought back for consideration.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the City Council and appointing Joseph Kurt and Lisa Oster, sorry, as the representatives.
So I have a motion by Councilman Brat. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 13, discussion and possible action to approve payment to TML IRP for the 2018-2019 insurance.
Counsel, this is something that we also do every year. You can see that it's significantly over my spending authority. Every year, the amount adjusts a little bit based on changes that we may have had to workers' comp or to, you know, any assets being added or subtracted. So we expect that this number to fluctuate a little bit more once they do their audit. So this is a routine item.
When you say a little bit more, it's $127.56 over budget here, which I think is phenomenal that we could get it that close to begin with, when you're talking about almost $150,000. When you say it's gonna adjust a little bit, what is a little bit? Another couple hundred bucks is not gonna be like several thousand?
Right, minor. And in fact, Lisa anticipated it might drop a little bit, so it could very well be a little bit over.
Yeah, we like drop.
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the payment to TML IRP.
I have a motion by Councilman Raymaker. I have a second by Councilman Brat. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 14, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas authorizing budget amendment number one to the 2018-2019 operating budget.
Counsel, this is a small amount of money, but we brought it back for full transparency. This is an item that just, it was left out of the budget inadvertently. This is an overtime amount. This $8,000 is based on historical. It's for sign review that is done by Officer Bloodsoe in the police department. It was previously hitting the court budget, and it's being more appropriately placed in the community development budget now. A discussion possible for next year's budget is to add a position for a fire inspector or fire marshal type of person, and who would also take on this responsibility as well. So should council choose to go in that direction, this could be the last year that we have this overtime budget.
Make a motion for a payroll budget amendment?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion? Only thing I'll say is I'm glad that next year, we'll come up with a solution. I'm just fundamentally, just sort of one of those philosophical things, I don't like overtime. If we know it's gonna happen, then we just schedule it, as opposed to having it be perpetual overtime. So I like the fact that we're going to start attacking this issue before we get to next year and come up with a good solution. Anyway, so with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 15, discussion and possible action to approve a change of scope for budgeted vehicle purchases and declaration of surplus.
Counsel, this is for a, the purchase of the police vehicles that were approved in the budget. They have decided that a different type of vehicle would serve their needs better than the Impalas that were originally approved. So in order to make that request, we have to modify the scope and then approve. The next item you'll see is to approve the purchase if council decides to go in that direction. This is just a procedural step.
Make a motion, we approve the change in the scope.
I have a motion by Councilman Brat.
I think we're supposed to make a declaration of surplus too, right?
That's correct. Sorry about that. You would also be surplusing the two vehicles that are going away.
Right.
And you can also determine how you want us to get rid of those vehicles. We can put them on eBay. Historically, council decides which course. We can put an ad on TML. We've done that before as well. We can trade them in.
We've traded them in. We put an ad on TML and also on our website, and we put them on eBay.
I amend my motion to include the declaration of surplus.
So do we need to state in this motion how we want to sell these vehicles right now, or we can circle back to that later?
You don't have to, no.
Okay, yeah.
You do need the declaration of surplus.
Declaration of surplus is fine, but I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to line out exactly what that process was gonna be right now. Okay, so I have an amended motion by Councilman Brat. Do I have a second?
Can we clarify what the motion is?
Motion, we approve the change of scope for the budgeted vehicles and the declaration of the surplus of the vehicles that they're trading in, the Impalas.
A second. I have a second by Councilman Beavers. Do we have any discussion?
I did have some question. I noticed these are Dodge, and I don't particularly care about brand, but I noticed the rest of our fleet are all GM products. Have we talked with Conroe Service? Did we look at the Chevy line or the GM line? Were we running Tahos and other vehicles? Is it wise to...
They service all of them. We have a Ford too.
Oh, that's true. We got the experimental Explorer, whatever it was.
Well, we have some Ford pickup trucks through public parts. And they service everything up there.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was some advantage to going with Dodge over Chevy or...
They priced all the pickup trucks.
Okay.
And that was the dealership that would work with the pricing that we had, so...
What he's trying to say is Dodge pickup trucks are cheaper than Ford's and Chevy's. I mean, let's just call it what it is.
They were less expensive, yes.
We got the same reliability.
There's guys here that have them, love them.
Okay. I mean, I think it's a great...
I drive a Ford, so I can't say anything like that.
I like the idea of movement from a car to a truck, so, yeah, I like this. I just wanted to make sure we dug.
Okay, so I have a motion. Is that any more discussion?
I know this will be used as a detective's vehicle, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do they transport?
No, prisoners?
No. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
They don't get...
It's easier to get out of a Dodge than it is a Ford.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 16, still talking about our Dodge trucks, discussion and possible action to approve the purchase of two detective vehicles for the police department.
So moved.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 17, discussion and possible action to approve a bid for demolition of ground storage tank number one at water plant number two.
Yes, Mayor, Counsel. This is the first phase of installing the new ground storage tank. We need to demo the existing, if you recall. It began to leak. Attempted to repair, the repair failed. And so this is the first step to get it out of the way and inspect the foundation underneath before the new ground storage tank is installed.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the bid to demo the ground storage tank.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman McLeod. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do I have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 18, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah deleting the existing Chapter 82 and replacing it with a new Chapter 82.
Counsel, this is the record ordinance that was on the last agenda, and council requested that this come back at a later meeting to give more time to review.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Brat. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Beavers. Any discussion?
So are these raises, they're adjusted for cost of living? How did we arrive at these?
We moved them up because the county is, everybody else is above, way above where we're at right now. So we have an officer out on the freeway at night on a wreck. If there's other wrecks working, we have an officer that's out there for 45 minutes to an hour waiting for a wrecker, which is kind of a long time to be sitting out on the side of the freeway, especially at nighttime hours, with civilians sitting there waiting for a wreck.
So what he's trying to say is if they can go somewhere else and get a buck 75, then we're right there at a buck 25, yeah.
I've been out there wanting to happen, so I understand that part. The application fees?
We raised our application fees because we had to buy a new printer last year. So we needed to raise our fees to start covering some of the printing of the ID cards and paying for the new printer and things like that.
It's just cost recovery.
Right. So these have been this way for, like I said, 15 to 17 years now.
We're still probably way under the other cities, too.
We're still lower than everybody else.
Especially on that standard service charge.
Right.
Typically about $250, $225?
$250 is what the county's at now. We're still below them, but we're raising it enough to where we'll get enough attention where they'll still split off and come work with us. Because we definitely don't want an officer sitting down on the side of the freeway with kids and families for 45 minutes to an hour at night.
Any more discussion?
I have one question. I'm trying to find my note here real quick. Oh, here it is. And Bill, I don't know, maybe this is the correct wording, but Section 8233, it talks about non-consentos. And Section 33.1 says, "Auto wreck or performing non-consentos within the city must have a valid wreck or permit issued by the county."
Correct.
So they have to be duly licensed, is that correct?
They have to have a county permit before they can get our permit.
That's the only question I have.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 19, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah designating certain parcels of land within the city as reserved for park and/or recreation purposes.
Counsel, this is the ordinance to officially designate these tracts of land as discussed at the last meeting.
Let me add, if you look closely, you'll see one parcel that's not there, and that is the park, our detention pond, right, would be west of City Hall. And that is not on the list because we actually don't own, we own about a half of the detention pond, and we have a 20-year agreement with the hotel. So in order for us to designate it, we would designate only about half of it, and frankly, we would need a meets and bounds description. And I determined at this time, we can always come back and add it, but for simplicity, let's get these designated, and we'll worry about that one later.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a...
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
So back to your comment, Bill. So the playground equipment that's there, is that on city property, or is that on the other...
That's on city property. It would be the, kind of the east half of the detention pond coming towards City Hall is our property.
So I'd like to see us get that meets and bounds study as soon as possible.
I'd agree with that.
And if we need to amend this to...
Or just include it. I mean, when you have to amend it, we just create another one.
It's easy to come back and add other parcels.
I did have a question. Says Mary Pat Case Pool, there wasn't a map specifically discussing that includes the parking lot, the undeveloped grass area to the north, or are we just talking about the fenstine area of the pool? Good question.
I thought we had a legal description...
There's a legal-looking document. You know, it's recorded where it was. And that was it for Exhibit D, and that's why I'm asking.
It was which exhibit?
Exhibit D.
D.
D is in Delta.
Yes.
So it's just the Monty D.
Yeah. I can't tell without looking at that deed, without mapping it out, whether that includes the parking lot or not.
Okay. When do we bring back the other part? Can we...
Well, I can tell you, at a half of an acre, it probably does not include the parking lot and the...
Well, it's, the half acre certainly doesn't, but then Lot 227, Lot 10...
That was a part that's owned by the Shenandoah Swim Team that was...
What we can do is we can get a surveyor to give us formal meets and bounds and a map of that, so we'll see. If we're missing something, we'll add it.
Okay. So when we bring back the ordinance to include this part?
Yeah, we can do.
We'll get that cleaned up. But I think it's a good idea to go ahead and make this declaration tonight.
And these are all tracts that the city owns?
Correct.
Correct.
Just one clarification, then, on Exhibit G. That is right next to the stadium, correct? And that Vision Park, is that, that's not Ed English? That's Vision Park? Wait, no, that's Shenandoah Park Drive, okay.
That's the east side detention pond.
It's the east side.
Yeah, right.
Making sure.
Okay, do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 20, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah amending Chapter 14-35A of the Code of Ordinances by permitting previously excluded metal roofs and providing for hidden visible fasteners, visibility of fasteners, sorry.
So this was a request that residents made to me, or to all of us. We've talked about it previously. I think these changes are good and reasonable. My biggest concern was the corrugated 10, and that's excluded, so I move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Beavers to approve. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
So there's no requirement, I may have missed it, requirement for preapproval?
Well, they'd have to get a permit.
All the other building requirements are still...
Yeah, all the other requirements are still be there, right?
Correct. This would just be, this would just be amending the appearance of the roof. All of the building requirements that we currently have in place for roofing material and specs would still be inspected and met.
Right, so at the point of a permit being inspected, you could make them aware of anything that they weren't actually needing, correct? So they wanted to use a certain kind of, a certain brand of roof, or that we had to meet the 130 mile-an-hour wind requirement, how the fasteners were, I mean, all those details.
They would prove those out prior to...
I mean, as opposed to putting on a standard roof, which would be pretty straightforward, I'm using these shingles, I'm using these nails, and I'm using this underlayment, that's sort of a check, 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 you're good to go, simplifying that. But that's pretty much it. It seems like... It seems like a little more detail, actually looking at specifications and such.
Right, they would submit their specifications for the roofing material and install at the time of submitting their application, it would be reviewed and then permitted after that, if it met all of our requirements.
Are we still looking at color requirements?
Those are part of the two through four that are outlined in this added language.
Any more discussion? Wait, we don't have a motion yet?
We do.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yep, we do, yeah.
Beavers, yeah. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item twenty-one, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas placing residency restrictions on certain sex offenders.
So this is an ordinance that I'd asked Bill to draft. Previously, smaller cities had not been able to pass ordinances, or had passed ordinances, but didn't uphold in court, that would restrict those that have registered as sex offenders from living near a safety, a child's safety zone. Montgomery County is, has about ten arrests per month right now that involve sexual crimes with minors or with kids. Currently in the city of Shenandoah, we have four registered sex offenders, all of which live within a thousand feet of a child's safety zone. The opportunity came up a year ago when the state senate passed a law, passed a bill that now would allow small cities or general law cities to enact such an ordinance, and that came in effect September of last year. Beginning of this year, we had our first case that actually went to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the cities that they can enact an ordinance that would require sex, registered sex offenders to live within a specified distance of a child's safety zone. So when that happened, I went to Bill and asked if we could begin to look at this, and have talked with Chief and Officer Ferrand, and thank you Officer Ferrand for being here tonight, I know there's going to be questions, and I appreciate you being here to answer some of those questions. But I think it's important that we send a message from our city that says, if you're a registered sex offender, there is not a welcome mat for you in the city of Shenandoah. You can find another place to live. In our city, we want to make sure that all of our residents are safe. This would, as everybody's read the draft here, or has read, it's possible for action tonight as well. There is a condition for exemption, so if somebody currently lives in the city, we can't ask them to leave. However, if somebody becomes a registered sex offender in the future and would live within a thousand feet of a child's safety zone, then they would be prohibited from returning back to our city. All of our child's safety zones have been identified, and parks, and I didn't know that last week, when the park came up to identify parks throughout the city, I didn't realize that that was going to piggyback, but it actually did. So designation of parks obviously is very important across our city because that's going to identify child's safety zones for us, and we'll identify those that, like I say, currently live inside those zones. There's four registered sex offenders in our city right now, there's one on Shenandoah, there's one that's, lives on Saddlewood, Pine Hill, and Pecan Hill. All four of which, like I say, had this ordinance been in effect, would not be residents of our city. They would be prohibited from living within a thousand feet of that child's safety zone. So I would move that we would, I want to make sure that we get this right, and that was one of the reasons I asked Officer Ferrand to be here, I know that he's helping out a lot in trying to look from the opposite angle. I know that this ordinance has been proven, it's been, it's what specifically the state wrote, and what's been upheld in the Texas Supreme Court at this point, as it's currently written, so... That's why this is before us tonight, so...
Okay, so it's a discussion and possible action item, do I have a motion?
I would move that, I'll move that we approve so we can get into discussion.
Yeah, I'll second. Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to approve, I have a second by Councilman McLeod, sounds like we have some discussion.
Since Officer Ferrand's here, would it be all right if he comes up?
Absolutely.
Addresses us?
Well, does anybody have any specific questions of Officer Ferrand, or do you have a presentation?
I have a small presentation.
Okay.
May generate more questions.
Good.
Thank you, let me come before you tonight. I'm Officer John Ferrand, I'm a sex offender registrar, it's part of my job. Up until two years ago, the city of Shenandoah didn't do sex offender registration, it was done through the county, and it was put on us, so it's pretty new for us. But I contacted ten different police departments about their current sex offender city ordinances, eight departments had city ordinances and two that did not, and are actually looking forward to how we go with this, because they're in this planning stages, I'll get to that in a minute. The city ordinances that I looked at dated back to two thousand and six, and most were, have been updated from two thousand and twelve to present. None of the agencies that I was able to speak with knew of any legal challenges of the ordinances in their particular cities. One agency did give a story of a sex offender going to court on a violation, and the judge did allow the offender to stay at that residence, citing that he had another place to live. So we're all going to have to work together on this. I'm not an attorney, Mr. Fairby is, and after reading all the other city ordinances and discussing their good points and bad points, there are a few things I would like you to consider in our, we're just getting started with this. One of the things I found is that our ordinance says sixteen, most of the other ones have been updated to seventeen years of age. Also, another area was civilly committed sexual violent predators, we needed that in there. Definitions of minor, person, mental state, add information about sex predators and child. And there was a question as to why the city's secretary is having a form, so they have to come up here and fill out a form under, I believe it's G. Two thousand and ten was our last time that we had the census, and we had seven-hundred-and-ninety-one homes, we have more now, out of which twenty percent had children under the age of eighteen living in them. This combined with our very attractive city parks, with our young visitors who come here to those parks, and our children, that's why I'm asking, this city ordinance needs to move forward. With that, do you have any questions?
So could you restate, I got the seventeen as definition of a minor, could you restate the other changes that you were asking for, or you're suggesting?
When I, this is the whole stack that I went through, and I apologize, this is from Pasadena, Pearland, Alvin, Friendswood, Bel Air, La Porte, Oak Ridge, and the last one is, this is the city that had an issue, Baytown. They, inside their ordinances, they had updated from their original one to civilly committed sexual and violent predators. Because there's the ones that have to register, and then the ones that are civilly committed, one of those technically.
You want to add, you want to add civilly committed?
Yes, sir. See if we can, this is all really on Bill, not me, just areas, talking to these people and things that we're missing, and ours is in its infancy state. And what we can and can't do, I don't know, these were just suggestions and things that I found in these ordinances where they were updated also, like it's two thousand and twelve and beyond. We haven't finished all of our definitions, like we need definitions of minor, person, and I believe mental state, that may be in there, and about sexual predators. And then the last thing that I found was in there, just a question as to why the city secretary is going to have a form, I didn't understand why the city secretary is going to be responsible for having a form.
Well, yeah, because they have to register with you or our police department, correct?
Right, they're already going to be registered in this, and in this DPS database.
Okay.
There might have been reasons for that, I'm just, it came up as a question.
I don't want to speak for Bill, but I believe the form was for an exemption.
Right.
If they're requesting an exemption.
That's if you request an exemption, is why you would file that with the city secretary.
Okay.
So currently, the way that the ordinance is written, it would require any existing registered sex offenders to file an exemption for this ordinance.
Correct. The other two things, let me comment on, is when I drafted this, I took this ordinance from the city of Crum, which is the case the Texas Supreme Court upheld the validity of their statute. Officer Ferrand is correct, there are cities that are more aggressive, that have said, let's try age seventeen, let's try fifteen-hundred feet, let's try a thousand, I mean, two thousand feet. The Texas Legislature specifically granted to Class A municipalities the right in two thousand and seventeen to regulate registered sex offenders within a thousand feet. That's what the Texas Supreme Court said, we uphold as constitutional. Could the Texas Supreme Court say, okay, to fifteen-hundred feet? Maybe, maybe not. Could the Texas Supreme Court say, we're going to allow a city to go to age seventeen or to age thirty-five? Don't know.
What's the state?
Could be.
There's a state definition of minor, right?
Well, the, chapter sixty-two says that it's age sixteen, and this statute, okay, that was passed is age sixteen.
Okay.
All we know for sure...
Is this works?
Is this works.
Okay.
And how much more aggressive you want to be, that's a city decision. So it's drafted conservatively, so that I can say to you, I believe this will, this has passed the Texas Supreme Court.
As I said, I'm not stepping on his toes, it does state that we're going to go under forty-eight point one-three-four, and under forty-eight one-three-four defines a minor as a person who is younger than eighteen years of age. So I, he's the man.
Well, it's, which, yeah.
So that would be seventeen and younger, and that's why it was brought up, we're in the infancy. He's our legal person, that's why I said I'm not your legal person, these were questions that other cities had, that were to discuss it with me, had said, why are you at sixteen instead of seventeen? And he explained it quite well, because that's what the city of Crum went to the Supreme Court, so it would be up to you to decide whether...
So one of my biggest concerns, in my world, when we deal with contracts, is that if one item of the contract is wrong, then the entire contract becomes invalid. And so I guess the question I'm asking is, if we try to stretch in one area, can someone use that against us later to then nullify this entire ordinance and say, this isn't legitimate, whether or not they fall under that particular clause or not?
Correct. Let me use, let's use the age. If we passed nineteen, let's say, age nineteen, it doesn't matter, and someone comes in who's eighteen, the Texas Supreme Court will not issue an opinion that says sixteen was okay, but nineteen's not, they're just going to say, if they reverse it, nineteen's not okay. They're not going to ever tell you...
Right. Right.
What the fix is.
But it's not that if the ordinance said nineteen, and the particular application was fifteen...
That's what I...
That they throw out the ordinance and say it was invalid, the whole thing's invalid.
Right, if you were, that's correct. In other words, if we're sure sixteen, if we're sure sixteen is good, and you're talking about someone that's fifteen, the Texas Supreme Court, in my opinion, would say, we don't agree, or we don't have an opinion about age nineteen, he's under sixteen and that's good enough. It's that gap, if you had someone seventeen, or eighteen, or nineteen, if that, then...
So there's no harm in us saying seventeen and under, if somebody comes at us at seventeen?
The harm would be, the only harm would be if the Supreme Court said, or the Court of Appeals said seventeen is wrong, so your statute's no good.
So that particular individual in that particular case...
And they would invalidate our statute.
They'd invalidate the whole statute.
Right.
And then we'd go back and rewrite it at sixteen and done with it.
Right.
I'm asking you to go to seventeen because under forty-eight, four-eighty-one point one-three-four, that's how it defines it.
That's how I understand what a minor is, is seventeen and under.
It seems like an easy change.
It's easy.
I don't want to do anything to mess this up, once it goes, that's my whole stance, is this is how the state defines its under health and safety, and that's what we have listed, that's why I'm saying, counsel, please consider seventeen after confirming it.
So just to be clear, I just want to make sure we got this right, if it was sixteen, then they couldn't come back and say, hey, they went to seventeen, and because they went to seventeen, this ordinance should be null and void, thereby...
If you were dealing with someone fifteen, sixteen, that's not going to be a concern, it's only if someone was seventeen.
They couldn't use that against you to show that this is invalid.
Right, if they were seventeen, then they could retract.
So maybe it seems to make sense to make it seventeen, pass it tonight, and then do other changes, maybe you can bring them back, and then let's look at them in more detail, but...
I think that'd be fantastic. This is in its infancy, and this is, you know, the time to bring up questions, that you have of me and him, so that's one. Counsel, do you have any other questions?
I do, I have a couple.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ray Mac.
The existing sex offenders here, are they owning, or are they renting? Do we have a breakdown of that?
Living. Living, living, owning. Means three people are living in a house, and one person is the owner of the house. I can't answer your renting, I'm never asking that, they live there.
Okay.
So one residence with four of these people?
No, they're different residences, is what he's saying, he doesn't know whether or not they're giving me money.
Mr. Ferrand, I don't know if they're paying their mother and father to live there.
They could be someone's dependent.
You mean with a family member, is what he's saying?
Correct, I'm sorry. Yeah, they're living with a family member, or living in a family's house.
Second then, how can we notify or socialize property owners in Shenandoah to make sure that they don't inadvertently rent to somebody this way? Is there some way that we can communicate to them the changes, so that, you know, they don't get involved in this? Perhaps there are people that aren't looking into this right now.
That's true, there's a term in here, right, that says, the homeowner who rents is in violation.
Correct, the renting person's prohibited. It's going to be just like any other city ordinance, they're going to have to do their due diligence to check, and we're of course going to have to go through all of our procedures to properly put this out there.
It's new, so we should probably do something a little more beyond constant contact, or something like that, just so that there's more awareness.
There is a way.
We don't have to, we don't have to solution it right here.
No, no, I agree, you know, we have it under there, it can be on our website, it could be a click thing, you know.
I would probably disagree and say that the burden of proof's on the sex offender, not the city.
But I think he's talking about communicating to landlords to make sure...
As a previous landlord, you do background checks, if you're not doing background checks, that lands on you. Sorry. I mean, if you're just arbitrarily renting to a sex offender, why? That tells me you don't care.
Well, have you seen some of the houses?
Well, I understand, but.
If a homeowner needed help going through the database, they could come up here and you would help walk them through.
Absolutely, and I think people are pretty smart in this day and age, and they know to go to the DPS website and check it, that's the only one to go to. I just want to emphasize that, there are different websites that will tell you somebody's a sex offender when they are not, and the only one to go to is the DPS site, and anybody has access to that that has a computer and internet.
And this DPS database, it's on this website, says that they're based on sixteen years, not seventeen, or whatever.
It gives a pretty detailed description of, if you haven't been on there, I mean, if you just.
No, I haven't.
If you go, if you just go to the, you can Google Texas Sex Offenders Registry search, it takes you right to the DPS website, and you don't have to put anybody's name, you can put your own personal address name, and it'll pull up a map of pretty much everyone that lives around your neighborhood that's a sex offender, that's registered as a sex offender.
And the important thing is that you can simply by a name search.
You can do a name search.
Easy search, right.
Yeah. So if you're a landlord, and you just want to double check, you can go right on there and figure it out real quick.
And then I guess lastly, it might be outside the scope of this, but would this apply to hotels, longer stays at hotels, or Airbnbs?
Yes, sir. We're going to get that in there, I found that in here, where they specifically went to that.
Yeah, there's a temporary residence.
Temporary residence is there, and this particular one did have it outlined, and like I said, we're in our infancy, and we have a little bit more to do on this, it covers hotels, motels, apartments, condominiums, bed and breakfasts, camps, manufactured homes, that we don't have a membership club, churches, stuff like that, yes, sir.
Good work.
John, have we had a problem with any of these people? No, it's a legit question, I'm not trying to.
This is a story I have for you, Councilman Brock, that I wanted to bring up. If a citizen contacts me, which I have been contacted, and says there's a sex offender in one of our parks, as of today, I can go there, discuss with them, see if something goes on where I have reasonable suspicion to go and talk to this person, and under laws of the state of Texas, to identify them. If I find out that a subject in the park is a registered sex offender, under our laws, there's absolutely nothing I can do, other than committing a crime, but then being there to satisfy our citizens, there's nothing I can do unless they're on parole or probation, because you are not, as a registered sex offender, not allowed in our city or in our parks. So if we pass this ordinance, and there's a registered sex offender in our parks.
Gives you some teeth, basically.
And now I can remove them from the park, and also issue them a citation.
Now, these people that live here in the city, their grandfather, basically, by this.
Yes, sir, according to what I read, yes, sir, they will be.
But they wouldn't be required. These boundaries, this thousand-foot boundaries, is there any kind of a map, John?
Not as of yet, we're still in our infancy on it, I haven't.
I've asked Bill to put together a map.
Good question, I haven't put it together yet, because we're still working on it. I think he's absolutely correct, one of the cities had a two-thousand-foot, and I'm not sure how that's going over, it's a huge city, you know, compared to ours, I think, as of right now, it goes with all the legal requirements.
So I see the part where they can't establish a permanent or temporary residence, where's the part that they can't be in the park?
It's going to be under our child safety zone.
Child safety zone.
They can't be within this thousand-foot circle.
Playground, yeah, very first, the top of this, if you have in front of you, the child safety zone, playground, schools, daycare facilities, and so forth.
Which it starts at that person's residence, and the thousand-foot goes to the child safety zone, the way this is read.
But I see Byron's question, though.
Is there an input on this? Obviously, we need to work with the township, but not, whether this is approved or not tonight, that's not, that doesn't mean that we're just going to let it go away and not talk about it with them, so.
Is there a timing issue for this one? Obviously, the end of the year, but.
December, has to go in front of their meeting, correct?
Right, it'll be on their agenda at their next meeting, for an option.
Because I hear y'all talk about other entities having control, it does, I mean, our residents don't have a vote, and who controls them, from the township side, they don't get to vote in the township.
That's right. No, that's exactly right, but in order for them to not be under these covenants, then they would have to vote to say that they want to be released from them. So I don't know that we could solve the problem tonight ourselves, without the residents' input.
And this'll come back in a year, anyway.
Yeah.
Needs going to.
We need to take care of that, if we get moving and have this on the, maybe even on the May election, however that's handled with that group.
Is that possible, Bill, to be able to do that?
I don't, without reading the Woodlands covenants covering those subdivisions, I don't know, but I think there's a different possible answer, and again, it's going to take discussion with the Woodlands, and I think it's going to take their consideration, but I think they have the option to turn over the enforcement of their covenants in that small area.
Well, it's not just the residents, I mean, it's our entire business corridor up and down Research Forest.
Well, that's what, I mean, they have the ability, I think, to turn over or assign to us the responsibility of enforcing covenants, whether they choose to do that or not, or choose to do it for residential and not commercial, or everything, I think is not, I think it's a complicated issue that's going to take a lot of consideration by the township.
Well, I'll say this, I think right now, we're in a position where we've been working pretty well with the township, we need to take that out for a spin and see what we can do with it.
I'm not so sure I like the idea of us enforcing covenants we don't have a say in.
Yeah, right, because they could pass a new covenant, and then suddenly, our people, I just, they should be released from the covenant.
The metal roof ordinance tonight is a good example, brought forward to us, we've amended it, we can't do that in the covenants, but could you bring an update on what those residents would have to do to be released from the covenants?
Yes.
And businesses, residents and businesses.
But residents first.
Yeah.
Let me see how many different sets of covenants there are on businesses.
Okay, so we still don't have a motion.
Yeah, we do, I made a motion, and Byron.
Did you? It's been one of those nights.
And that's to renew it.
That's right, that was to renew it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four one, with Council McLeod being the one no. Sorry, I'm not getting a lot of sleep. Okay, item twenty-three, city attorney's update.
Yes, counsel, I wanted to bring you all up to date, a week ago Monday, the Aloft Hotels and its contractor, LNG, were served by Oak Haven with a temporary restraining order prohibiting them from building their storm sewer in our eighty-foot easement going to Drainage District number six. The city was not named as a party in that litigation, but Aloft and LNG called us. The allegation was that the city did not own any easement between the Oak Haven detention pond, that eighty-foot easement. We intervened in that lawsuit, and there was an injunction hearing last Friday with Oak Haven attempting to convert their temporary restraining order stopping construction into a temporary injunction, and we appeared, actually, Jackie was the witness for the city, and I'm pleased to say that the judge denied the injunction, and in effect, the judge found that we do have a valid easement, which was important to the city, and I actually don't know physically, because of the rain, if they've actually been outbuilding the storm drainage or not, but they're okay to do it, and so they're back on schedule at Aloft.
Okay. Nothing else? Anything else?
No.
Move to item twenty-four, which is city administrator updates.
Counsel, I have just a few quick updates, a follow-up to the gas line that was cut last Wednesday in Dulcimer Woods, it was a subcontractor working for TACUS, they cut a partially marked line, there were two homes that were evacuated by SPD as a safety precaution. The leak was capped, and service was restored that same evening. Chief Shaw gave me a little bit of backstory on the residents, and we've got a lot of good feedback from the residents at that location, they were very congenial, they were, they ended up having dinner by choice with their neighbors, so it was not a bad situation at all, and Chief Shaw had offered to them to come to City Hall and just relax here and watch TV, use the internet, et cetera, and they actually ended up joining up with their neighbors, and everything worked out well. I did have an opportunity to speak with Hal, with TACUS this morning, and we talked about some ways to communicate a little bit more with our residents, give them a little more advance notice on some of the activity that's going on, to help them better understand this process, so. Different subject, Land Care is performing plant trimmings around the city, so you'll see some noticeable cutbacks on Vision Park, around the roundabout, Land Care being our maintenance contractor. The Hazard Mitigation Grant application that Joseph has been working on with Blile Engineering is nearing completion, another agency, Tetra Tech, has been involved, and they stated that they have to complete the quality check, and then it's ready for submission, so we've been making steady progress with that application. Joseph joined Jennifer with Blile and Associates last week at a HDAC application training as part of this, our submission for David Memorial, and it's a lengthy process, it's very similar to our Hazard Mitigation Grant application. We should know if our project is selected for consideration January of nineteen, it's very competitive, and if we are considered, there's a five-year span before we would see any funds, so we'll keep you updated on that process. Center Point has mowed their property at the gas relief valve up there on Research Forest after contacts by code enforcement, so we have been after them to maintain that property, and they have done that. And last, but not least, we have a job posting for two police officers, and Chief Shaw reported that we are already receiving inquiries from local officers who are interested and applying, so we look forward to getting those applications. I'll also add that I have four strong candidates for the CBB director position, I'm going to be interviewing one of them in Fort Worth while we're at TML, they just, he's going to happen to be there. This is a little bit unique, because all four applicants are out of town, three of the four are out of state, so it's going to require a bit more coordination, and we're working through that process, so I'll keep you up to date on that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Item twenty-five was a second citizens forum, and we didn't have anybody signed up to speak. Go, buddy? Oh, come on up, you know me, I'll let anybody talk. And.
I appreciate the second.
I'm taking this as Zolton, right? Yeah, if you don't mind, just take the name for the record.
Sure. Zolton Carl? I'll make this one quick, so just wanted to appreciate the clarification, Councilman Beavers, so I do understand that growing is middle is a priority, I agree with that, I agree, Research Forest also should be a priority, and I think we can do both, and I think if the, I ask that the council revise the support, the resolutions of support only at grade level before submitting to HDAC, so based on that information, I think that's a fair request, in my opinion, and it seems like it could solve many issues, because if we're just pushing traffic to six pines, that is very detrimental to the city of Shenandoah, causing additional issues on those intersections. Just a quick add.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if nobody else wants to speak, we'll move to item twenty-six, which is council inquiry, and we'll start with Councilman Remaker.
I already asked mine, so there you go.
Councilman Fletcher?
I just want to follow up to see how it's coming on scheduling a joint session?
For the sign ordinance?
For P and Z.
For P and Z, and MDD, and council.
Actually, Jackie and I kicked that off at the last P and Z meeting, and we are giving P and Z time to go through the sign ordinance and provide some initial recommendations, they are the sign committee, so we're starting with P and Z, and we'll be coordinating a meeting.
I think that'd be a good, after the first of the year type of timetable, considering we're getting into holiday schedule.
But if we don't start.
But I think we, but yes, but I think we start.
We have enough time.
For January. Absolutely.
And then we only have two more meetings, or three more meetings before we hit January.
Totally agree, I'd like to see it in January.
January later.
Definitely. There's a lot to talk at that meeting, obviously, signs is a big part of that, but we also need to rediscuss our IDC and comprehensive plans, and begin to take action on moving forward with that as well, and I think that'll be important to take place in a joint session Now that we've started a new budget year, I know everybody has money burning a hole in their pocket, so I'll ask about a couple items as we move forward, because again, we're going to go through holidays, and I don't anticipate a lot of this being done before that, but as we begin to plan it here at the beginning of the year, as schedules free up, then codification is obviously one at the top of the list that we begin to work on, and I know that we've budgeted money for that to begin, as well as with parks and pathways, and beginning to identify an area for a dog park as well, so if we could check on those, and maybe have some kind of progression as to which direction we're headed in the next meeting, that'd be great.
We'll bring that.
And then, last but not least, I saw Hannah's here in the back, and I just want to say thanks and show appreciation to you for consistently writing articles that are very balanced, and it doesn't go unnoticed, not just by us that are here on the dais, but by many of the residents as well, they appreciate fair reporting, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman Fletcher. Councilman Beavers?
Congratulations to staff on a great national night out, it was a great event, I like the changes, definitely liked it at the park, and, you know, we do some, it's, we're a small city, but, you know, we get to do some important things. Ted, thank you for bringing the sex offender ordinance before us, I think that was the most important thing we've done since I've been on councils, appreciate that, and Mike, thanks for bringing the parks ordinance, another very important thing that we're able to accomplish. On the HDAC application for David Memorial Drive, are we pursuing any additional resolutions of support from other entities?
Yes, we are, Joseph has been taking the lead on that, on the city side, and Blile Engineering is assisting.
Does it look like we'll get several before the deadline?
We've gotten a handful already, we're basically asking for letters of support from every affected entity, and that was at the suggestion of HDAC, we've already received two at this time, and about six or seven more to receive, they've all been sent off just waiting for.
Does that include the Road Utility District?
No, it doesn't.
Could we ask them?
We can.
Pretty cool.
Great call. Thank you all.
Councilman Brock?
I'm good tonight.
You are good tonight.
Wow. I don't know about that. I have nothing.
Councilman McLeod?
Just wanted to second Ted's comment on make sure we get moving on this, the parks and pathways update. I think it was a good suggestion by Councilman Beavers at Budget to, you know, we take a broader look at it. But I don't want that to get bogged down. It's... We're eight days into the budget here, so let's get going.
We're too late.
And then, once again, go get registered to vote. Tomorrow's the last day. It's really, really important that everybody take part in elections.
So I'll finish it up. I want to start off by saying I appreciate everybody that came tonight. But I really appreciate our neighbors in the woodlands that showed up. Thank you for coming. And your input is heard. I appreciate our commercial residents. And Tom Zulu showed up, always a great partner in the city. And we appreciate you being here tonight. There's a lot of good information out there. There's also some bad information out there. And so consequently, I was going to talk about, coincidentally... I'm telling you, I'm not getting a lot of sleep right now. Coincidentally, I was going to bring up tonight's...
By the way, your wife called.
Yeah, I know. She's getting less. So I was going to bring up tonight, anyway, the September 26 council meeting. I highly, highly, highly encourage anybody who hasn't done it to go back on YouTube, go to the City of Shenandoah subscription page, and go watch the September 26 council meeting. Probably the first hour and a half, at least. It's a long meeting. Trust me, we know we were here. But there were some very good presentations. I believe that we have all those presentations up on the website now?
That's correct.
We have those presentations up on the website. So you can then go to our website, shenandoahtech.us. And you can see those presentations a little bit clearer, a little more close. I got an email from a resident that basically said he was really disappointed in the fact that council was looking into widening Grogan's Mill to four lanes. And nothing could be further from the truth. I mean, if it's not crystal clear by now that everybody sitting up here is so adamantly opposed to that happening that we are taking every step possible to keep it from happening, then I don't know what else to do. But what I would say is, is please, 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 try to do as much research as you can. Try to hear all the different stories and the historical points of view. A lot of good information in that particular council meeting. And then if you have any additional questions after that, my email address is rweeler@shenandoahtech.us. I don't know my phone number off the top of my head to my office. But I guarantee if you call the city, they'll put you through to my voicemail. It shows up on my phone. You know, I had a coffee again this morning with somebody. And Tom, I'm sorry I couldn't meet you today, but I would have if we would have scheduled it. I will meet anybody, almost anytime, anywhere that you ask me to, and we can talk. So let's clear up the bad information. And let's try to talk our way through good solutions instead of resorting to random websites and illegal postings on federal mailboxes. That's not a good solution for government. So I'll get off my soapbox.
Is there anything I add something?
Yeah, absolutely.
And this may have been the same resident. I think one particular resident emailed all of us. But he was also mistaken, thinking that the grade separation was going to be a north-south separation on Grogan's Mill. And that's...
Well, that we supported it.
Yeah. That's not what's happening. We would not support it.
Yeah.
It's because of that, it's because of the risk of that happening that has actually been threatened. And that's why I felt it was important that we look at alternative options.
If you go look at the presentations, and I... Thank you for that, Councilman Beavers. I didn't want to get too far into it. But if you go look at the presentations, you will clearly see that that is an option that was reviewed by the RUD. And they have the money to do it. They don't have to go to HDAC to do that. So they could put a grade separation on Grogan's Mill going north-south over Research Forest. And I think we'd beat that dead horse. But I wanted to throw out the 9/26 meeting and encourage you to go watch that and pick up some additional information if you haven't already.
Can I add one thing?
Absolutely.
So we've had a few residents that have come forward and said that this council doesn't listen to our residents. I want you to know, and I probably can say this speaking for everyone, we will make ourselves... If you have a question, a concern, a thought that involves our city to make it better... If you made one simple request, we would be there. If we don't know you have something to say, if I don't see you on a daily basis, I'm not going to hear it. But I know for me personally, I will go out of my way to listen to any resident and hear the concerns that they have. And I know every council member up here will do the same. We want to hear from the residents, but to come and tell us that we don't make ourselves available, that's incorrect. As the mayor said, he meets for coffee. We all do. We all meet in private settings, public settings. We're willing to listen and address the concerns for our residents. This is the first council that I've known that truly does put all of our residents first. It's not for one or two residents or a select few. It's for the entire city of Shenandoah. That's why we're here. So please know that we are available. And we'll be more than happy to sit down with you personally or in a group setting and talk about the concerns or ideas. Communication is a vital part of success for every organization, including government. And as I always tell people, if it's a thought you have, it probably needs to be a conversation we have.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, please reach out. We'd love to hear from you. And again, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I know this Monday night meeting is not... Especially staff. Thank you all for, on a Monday night, you know, having to come up here and give up your evening. I know that's not easy to do for a two-hour meeting. But I appreciate accommodating everybody's schedule and being able to allow those that need to to go to TML. So if anybody... If nobody's got anything else with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:55. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, I'm here Friday. Goodbye.